Approve it.
Wave rules.
Yeah, wave rules to approve it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The most attractive thing about this, and I saw it, two things, two things. And the most attractive thing really is that it's paying for itself essentially. I think we're out, what, Cheryl? What's the?
Six hundred.
So, I mean, but it cuts, it cuts the real cost of it way down. And I think that was an excellent move. That is the most attractive for me. The other is, don't come back.
Oh, no, the way this, this plan is structured, it's built in for retention and everything, so.
Yeah, I read that, I read that, and I'm holding to that.
I got you, and.
You said, y'all do this, and we won't be back.
Chief Richardson, I can't take all the accolades for that. He, he stepped up, and he, he put forth some serious effort behind this.
It was excellent. It was an excellent presentation, and I really like the way you decide how you're going to pay for it. And it's something that's much, that's really needed. We want to keep the morale as high as possible with our sheriff's department, because you're doing an excellent job, Sheriff.
Well, I appreciate y'all, and if it wasn't for you all, we wouldn't be able to do the things you're doing. So, no, I thank you all.
Anybody object to waiving rules on this item? No objection. You got anything else, Sheriff?
Uh, I think, do I need to, yeah, talk about the, Montgomery Academy wants us to provide them with SROs. By law, the sheriff's office can't contract with an independent school entity. So, what we're doing is getting AG's opinion on, as to the county commission being able to have a contract with an independent school entity. Right now, there's a lot of discussion. We had bills that were on the table this time that got called into the gambling legislation, and none of those bills moved. So, right now, what we want to do is just get an AG's opinion as to the legality of you all being able to do that. So, I'm just asking you all to waive rules. Let's get that AG's opinion, so at least we'll know what direction we're going to be able to go in with them.
That's, the key thing on that is that participating private school fully funds.
Yes, they're going to fully fund. Oh, they're funding everything, so, but like I said, still, we got to get AG's opinion on that. So, I'm just requesting you all to waive rules, and let's get an AG's opinion on that.
Any objections to waiving rules?
No, I just, I just wanted to ask a question. Is there an example of that system being utilized anywhere in the state of Alabama?
No, that's why we're getting legislation. Right now, Baldwin County has an agreement in place that they were trying to do it, Jefferson County. Because you got so many independent school entities out there, they're looking for SROs to protect those schools as well. Our problem is, is the way that the law is structured, the constitution is read, we can't go into a contract with an independent school. And you all will have to be that person to do that, because you pay our salaries, and you provide everything for us. So, right now, we need to get you all to have a AG's opinion done to see if you all can do that. Because the way the law is written is, it's kind of vague, but at the same time, we'll have a clear understanding.
Montgomery Academy reached out to the sheriff.
Yes, they reached out.
Macon East, we don't do.
We got off-duty, off-duty people, they hire off-duties. And, as well as Hooper. They are, they hire off-duty as well. Yes.
Any other questions, or any objections to waiving rules? Thank you, Sheriff.
Also, since I'm standing up here right now, you've got that resolution for Phil Bryant, and he's up here, but we got an academy graduation at 10 o'clock, and I would like to go ahead and do that. So, uh.
I said.
Yeah, Phil, come on down, you sitting up there. I just said your name, I said it in the microphone, Phil Bryant here up there, and he's sitting up there. And Doug, if y'all want to do that, this resolution. Man, I ain't got my glasses on. You got glasses wrapped around your neck? Well, I'll just, yeah, I'll sum it up, but, yeah. Well, as you all know, Phil Bryant, he was our executive director for our community corrections. He just retired on the 31st of May, and so, let's give him a round of applause. He did a fantastic job while he was there. He really led the charge of getting us to where we're at today. I know Dan was on the board with us, and he left me on the board. But, Phil, you know, I want to say thank you for what you've done for Montgomery County. Thank you for the lives that you have touched, because people don't really understand what community corrections is all about. It's about getting people out of the jail and giving them a second opportunity. And that's what you were doing, that's what you were spearheading and leading the way. And I can only say thank you, and I know the citizens of Montgomery County saying thank you too as well, because when they leave your program, they know that you gave them a second chance. And don't everybody get a second chance in life? And, and so, I want to tell you, thank you. And the county commission did a resolution, whereas, you know, you've been here, what, 27 years? You came here from the Board of Pardons and Parole, you know, and it goes all the way through your family history back when you were born, and I know people don't want to hear all that. But, it says, whereas Bryant is known in the community for his commitment to fair and effective justice practices. And that's what we want you to be remembered as, and so, it goes down and says, be it resolved that Phil Bryant, for his many years of service to the citizens of Montgomery County, be presented this on the 4th day of June 2024.
I want to tell you how much I appreciate everything you did, and I'm going to miss you, I know that. But I'm going to defer to my commissioners, especially Commissioner Harris, who's been on that board. Dan, words from you?
Yes, Phil, I was there when you came on board. You came on the board during a time when we really needed some leadership. We really were having some problems in keeping the numbers up, and figuring out a way how to build up the areas that we were really working in. You've done that, you have us on a path, as I understand it right now, you have us on a path to do the thing that Chairman Dean always shot for, to make it self-sufficient, to make it be able to, to bring in enough money to take care of itself. And due to your work and your effort, you've brought us to that point where we're on the verge of being able to do that. And for that, the county is grateful, and we thank you for your service. And, you know, you know, last week, I tried to talk to you and talk you out of accepting that retirement, coming on back. I understand, I understand, life waits for you, and I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the sheriff, because when I first got here, he was real instrumental in helping me. Anything I asked for, he always pretty much gave it to me. So, I really appreciate you for that, and, no, you can't get it back. But, and the county commission, the one thing that I got was support from you all, and I really appreciated that. I don't think that we could have moved forward without that support that you all gave me. You know, you supported me, and you supported community corrections. And as Commissioner Harris said, I do think that we're now, and I'm still saying we, even though I, I've retired, but I do think that we are on that path to where we can be self-sufficient. And I think there's a good foundation that's been laid, and that you all will see the fruits of that. So, thank you all.
We're going to get a picture. You got any of your staff or your family here, you want to get them down for the picture? Yeah.
Is Judge Love online to join us, or Latoya, were you here to speak for him?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to seek approval to hire Dr. Jay Coleman as the court interim mental health, I mean, mental health therapist. This position was vacated on May the 14th, and it's imperative that we hire a professional in this position to manage the critical functions associated with this role. He brings over 10 years of experience in the mental health field. Dr. Coleman is serving currently as the Director of the Infinite Horizon Stabilization Unit with Carestar Health. And it's very essential that we get someone in this position immediately, so we can continue to serve the community as it relates to mental health.
So, need a 90-day interim?
Yes.
That's what you're asking? Any questions? Any objection to waiving rules on this item? No objections. Thank you, Latoya.
Thank you.
You'd be better than JC does.
Ms. Walker from the Grants Department?
Good morning, I'm going to be brief like Latoya. Good morning. I stand before you this morning seeking your permission to apply for the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund grant. There's no match, I'll leave with that. And the application we submit will be to help offset the cost of the storm shelter that's going to be placed at the Flatwood Community Center. The grant pays about 25% of the total cost.
Any questions?
I see a look on Commissioner Harris.
I was just wondering how much the grant was.
We don't have the, all the quotes back yet, so I got to wait until we get the quotes back for the shelter, and then we'll know.
So, the grant will pay about 25% of the total cost?
Yes, it's just the offset cost.
Now, all you got to do is find another 75%.
Oh, we have another 75%, Commissioner Sankey has.
Yes, this is something that I wanted to do with the opera funding that we received.
Yes, sir.
And so, just happy to have Ms. Walker help with this.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. And we're hoping to have that storm shelter out there, so that it could be an example for the rest of the county. Hope we can provide some training, as you and Kendall and I have already discussed, in terms of emergency management. So, we're looking forward to that, being out in the Flatwood community, along with our brand-new community center.
Sounds great. Thank you.
So, that'll be next agenda?
Be next agenda.
Item number five is a lighting services agreement with Alabama Power to upgrade the leased lighting fixtures on Marla Road.
Any questions from the commission? Be next agenda.
Item number six is an amendment to the contract with Seaspire, formerly Troy Cable Vision, to extend the agreements on a month-to-month basis until September 30th, 2024, for prevent, for the probate and revenue east and south offices.
Be next agenda.
Consider a bid award to Progress Rail Services Corporation for a self-contained tree trimming machine. Any questions? That's for engineering.
Be next agenda.
Consider a transfer of rental tax proceeds.
Be next agenda.
We have an information item regarding labor laws. Carmen Douglas is here, if you have questions about that.
What was that?
There's a memo about a labor law regarding exempt employees.
Torn labor, release the final rule. On exempt status. And that's just for general information? No action on that?
I'm sorry.
Subject, how do you want to handle the change? It's my understanding that the job has been vacant for years, so we can either abolish the job, or we can change its non-exempt to be provided by the.
So, it hadn't been filled in years.
Now, this is, this is a position that hasn't been filled, but we don't want to remove it at this time.
We don't want to remove the job, we just want to make it exempt.
Just continue that it would be, and if it, at the time, you know, if it, if it changes from one to the other, that's fine.
Okay. So, there's no action on our part, then?
Correct.
Is that all we have?
I believe so.
Have we had anybody sign in, Derek, back there for the? If you signed in to speak at 10 o'clock, I'm going to call you now, you have the option of doing it now, or if you want to wait to 10 o'clock, we'll be glad to entertain you at 10 o'clock. But if you want to go ahead and get it over with, then we'll let you go early. Randy Brown? RB painting contractors, Randy? Did you want to say anything, Randy? I know you said you want to get more involved with the county and the commission and serving. Is that, anything you want to say?
I just want to come down, just want to take time out of my day to just, you know, be in attendance, and feel what's going on, and be with the county commission, and expect to have.
Well, we're glad to have you. We're glad to have people that want to be involved, and we appreciate that, Randy. And you had reached out to me, and I'm glad to see you, and glad to get to meet you. Kajra Parkman? You want to wait to? Okay, where's Kajra? Okay, all right, you want to wait to 10 o'clock? Okay. Yep, we can do that. Ken, the men's mental health resolution, can we do that now? Yeah, but we can do it now. Thank you.
I can never get upset, but you, Commissioner Sankey.
You all may or may not be aware that June is Men's Health Month.
And you know how men can be sometimes, when it comes to taking care of our health, sometimes we don't want to go to the doctor, sometimes we're afraid of those prostate exams and, and other things that are required when you get a certain age. We don't want to do the colonoscopies and all of that. And a lot of these things that we get at our primary healthcare providers, test and so forth, that can prevent some of the diseases that, that we have the tendency to, to incur. And so, we, Men's Health Month is just an opportunity to bring awareness to men's health, and encourage men to be more proactive in seeking health care. And then we're also asking our wives, our spouses, our significant others, to help us, and persuade us, and nudge us to get on out there and get those health issues taken care of, because after all, we are part of the community, we're part of the family structure. And you all need us to continue the family unit, and to do other things that men have the privilege of doing in this society, but we can't do it if we're not well. And so, I'm sure that you all can relate to that. And so, we, all my fellow commissioners and I, we've put together a resolution, or rather, a proclamation to acknowledge Men's Health Month. And we have Ms. George Lloyd, who is a good friend of mine and a healthcare profession that's seasoned. She's here, along with some of her colleagues, to accept this proclamation. So, I'm going to ask you all to come up at this time, if you would, please. Okay. I'm going to let, I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll let Ms. George Lloyd come up, and she can tell you all about her position, things that she's done in the community as relates to health care. And Ms. Luna, who is the current president of the River Region Advanced Practitioners. And then you have another young lady that was here, she's not coming up. Okay, very good, very good. And so, let me just read the resolution, and so, we can move on. Proclamation, as I said earlier. Whereas the life expectancy of men is roughly six years less than women. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the leading causes of death for men includes heart disease, cancer, and unintentional injuries. And whereas, studies have shown that men are far less likely than women to go to the doctor or report health problems to a medical provider. And whereas, men between the ages of 35 and 54 are twice as likely to develop type 2 diabetes. And whereas, the rates of suicide and cancer are higher for men than women. And whereas, roughly 11.5% of U.S. men younger than age 65 like health insurance coverage. And whereas, the health of men impacts spouses, parents, children, siblings, friends, and colleagues. And whereas, Men's Health Month is a time to promote healthy eating, self-exercise, and getting regular, well, promote healthy eating, self-care exercise, and getting regular health checkups and screenings. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Montgomery County Commission hereby designate June as Men's Health Month in Montgomery County. And Ms. George Lloyd, we want you to receive this on behalf of the Montgomery County Commission, and of course, you are free to make any remarks. And we just want to acknowledge the work that you do every day over at Alabama State University as Director of Healthcare Services for that fine institution. And so, just come on, tell the folks who you are and what you do, and we appreciate you all for coming.
Thank you so kindly. I first would like to thank the commission for the tireless work that I know you do in the community, because I know community service is hard work, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So, thank you for this recognition and resolution proclamation on today. I also would like to thank Isaiah Sankey, who is a practicing nurse practitioner, for his leadership, for all that you do for the community. We've been on the battlefield together a long time, serving folks in Montgomery County and surrounding counties. And it's good to see that the work continues on this level with you, with the county commission. Thank you for what you do. I currently, as he indicated, I'm the Senior Director of Health Services at Alabama State University, where we are trying to impart on the young men there at the university this month, the significance of making sure that they take care of themselves and focus on men's health, because it does go unnoticed sometimes. As a matter of fact, we're having a men's health event on Friday at the university. It's open to the public, so please do share that information. We're honored to have Isaiah Sankey, along with Dr. Belafond DePew, as our speakers to talk to that captured audience about the importance of getting their annual exams, and what a PSA means, and what you can expect when you go into the doctor's office to have an exam. So, I'll just pause right there, introduce my colleague, who is the president of the Advanced Practitioners for the River Region. Nurse practitioners are doing wonderful things in this community. I served as a past president and passed the torch on to my colleague here, who's doing an outstanding job in our community, you know, carrying on the work that needs to be done in our, not only county, but state. So, LeAnn Luna, if you want to come forward.
Good morning, thank you for having us here today.
Can we get a picture? Want to thank Mr. Ken Ward for always coming through with resolutions and proclamations, and helping us to acknowledge the work that the people are doing in Montgomery County.
Do you all want to hold it in the pictures? And I'll bring it out afterwards. All right, everybody? All right, one, two, three. One more? Thank you.
I do want to recognize, we have some of our summer interns here today in the meeting. We had an opportunity to meet with them yesterday morning in the orientation. We had about 60-plus summer interns working this summer for, I think, eight weeks in our different departments. If you would, interns, if you would, just stand up so we can recognize who you are. All the summer interns are here. How many y'all worked here last summer with us? So, we have some that came back. I think we had about 20 that came back.
Mr. Chairman, let them tell us where they're from. What schools?
I made them do that yesterday, too. Tell us your name and what high school or college you attend.
My name is Oliver Booth, and I am a rising senior at Montgomery.
Lamp?
I'm a cover, always been an Alabama riding sophomore at Worcester Kentucky University.
I'm Gabriel Johnson, a graduate of UC, and I continue at Alabama University.
I'm a senior, I'm a riding junior at University of Alabama.
Thank y'all. Y'all enjoy your summer. Oh, we got two more, I didn't see y'all, I'm sorry. I apologize for leaving, especially at Singleton, I shouldn't have left at Singleton.
No, you shouldn't have left at Wolverine off, either.
Wolverine, did we leave a Wolverine?
Did I hear Carver?
Yeah, he got Carver a couple times.
All right.
Well, y'all enjoy your summer, thanks for being here with us. Anything else from the commission? We got a little bit of time, if anybody wants to.
Mr. Chairman, really quickly, as you talked about the summer interns, I'd like to thank Lisa Herring, Ken Ward, Henry Jackson, Melissa Peak, Nina Eggers. They all took the time to get all 60 of these kids processed, and right place, right time, and all the department heads who showed up yesterday to make sure they had their kids and get them all done. It takes, it takes a lot to kind of pull this together, especially once you announce it, but, you know, our team, our staff here at the county, we, they came together, got everything. There were questions that even popped up yesterday about how do we handle them, parking, where do the kids park if they're driving? So, I'd just like to really take time to appreciate those staff persons and department heads who kind of put this all together, so we can have all these young kids who want this opportunity like you discussed yesterday. So, thanks to staff.
Yeah, as we discussed yesterday, there was four applicants for every person we were able to hire. So, we had a lot of people apply for these summer intern positions. So, it's been a great program, and I think Commissioner Harris actually started the program.
This is, this is really, I think this is the largest class we've had, right? This is, it's excellent. It's growing into exactly what I thought it would grow into, and it's doing exactly what I thought it would do. At some point, we're going to hear from some of the, some of the ones who, who've actually gone through this process, and what they're doing now with their lives. I'm in touch with a couple of them, and they're really successful individuals, and they still remember and appreciate the experience that they gained here, working with us at Montgomery County. And that was really, really the whole purpose of it. Well, mainly to give our young people something to do during the summer months. But the other thing was to really expose them to a real job, and, and have them to hone some soft skills, and know skills that are necessary when you move out into the workplace, and it is working. And I really, really, really want to thank all of our department heads, because we couldn't do it without you, without you participating in this program, and, and allowing these young people to come into your areas and working with them. We appreciate that, appreciate all of your work on this, and thank you so much. And I know you guys are going to be very successful in life, and I hope you really enjoy this summer's experience.
I'd like to, before we go, recognize my summer intern. She's home from college, and I told her that I needed a free, free labor. And so, with that being said, my daughter Ada Ziegler, would you please stand? She is a junior at Troy University, major in political science.
And I believe we had one more intern come in the back? Are you an intern? You want to tell us? I know you're not.
Not you.
Oh, not you, Sheriff.
You want to tell us your name and which school you attend?
I'm Sinire Brown, at Miami University, Alabama.
Does anybody else has walked in in the last five or 10 minutes that would like to speak at 10? I have the list up here, and we'll let you go now if you want to. You get a little more time if you go now, so.
I don't know about that.
We got a little time. We got fifteen minutes until our ten o'clock session, and we can't start until ten, so it's always nice to try to get them in early, but if not, we'll do it at ten o'clock. Anything else on the commission before we recess? Uh, we're gonna take a, uh, recess, and since we have fifteen minutes, there's no excuse for us not to start at ten o'clock sharp, so. I'm not saying any names. So, so, ten o'clock, we'll be back, right here, ready to get started.